Okay.
Okay, we'll be starting now. Good evening, everybody. I'd like to welcome everybody to the May... Wow, it's already May. Meeting of the Laconia Zoning Board of Adjustments. I'll request that everybody who has a cellphone on, please to put it on mute, silence, whatever, so it doesn't disturb the meeting. And the other thing I would like to highlight is as we're having each of the applications, I do open it up to the floor for people to speak, but we will use a very courteous manner when we're speaking. We don't speak to the crowd, we speak to the board as we talk, and there is no cross-talking. So, please keep that in mind as we run the meeting and stuff like that, okay? And with that, could we call the roll?
Richard Brody?
Brody.
Brody, sorry. Marcia Hayward?
Present.
Jane LaRoche?
Here.
Roland Mahew?
Here.
Mike Delavecchia?
Here.
Steve Bogert?
Here.
Mike Foot?
Here.
Dean Trufatton?
Yep.
Okay, we have a four-member board at the moment. Gail will no longer be with us, okay? She chose to not be. And so with that, Marcia, would you please be...
Yes.
The voting person for all...
Yes.
Actions before the board, okay? Now, as a remember, as a reminder for the alternates, as we can contribute as alternates and questionings and stuff, but as we start the voting process, there is no voting by the alternates unless you're taking the place of a full, of a full person. As a, I don't even know what you want to call them, because they're not, everybody's a full person.
Regular.
A regular. Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, and we do have a new planning assistant. Is that the term?
She's a zoning technician.
Zoning technician, would you...
Greetings, Sheena.
Welcome.
Thank you.
With that, we're going to go ahead and get started. We have a lot of things to cover tonight. So with that, we have a Zoom meeting tonight, okay, and we have a telephone meeting tonight. Telephone meeting is the first one for me, but that's okay. We're, we're gonna embrace all this newness and just move on. Any questions? All right, we'll go ahead and get started. We did the roll call, staff, all right, acceptance of the minutes. Everybody get a chance to read the new addition revised.
How do I know if it's a new addition?
The printed copy is the new addition.
And if so, does anybody have any corrections, additions, subtractions? I move we accept the minutes as written. We have a motion to accept as is.
I'll second that.
We have a second. All those in favor? Okay, motion passes and minutes are good. All right. Next is an extension. The extension is Endicott Street East, request to extend the approval to install solar garden on city property. Okay, so this is our phone call.
Hello, this is Carson.
Hey, Carson, this is Dean Trufatton.
And... Hey, Dean, how are you?
Very good. We're gonna put you on speakerphone, and we got a room full of people here.
Sure thing.
All right, you're, you're up right now, Carson, so you want to go through your reasons?
Sure thing, yeah, thanks, Dean. And first of all, thanks for letting me call in, everyone on the board. We're based in Denver, so I appreciate, you know, being, being cooperative and letting me just do the call-in. But the reason for the extension really comes down to some supply chain issues that the solar industry is still recovering from, from COVID. You know, in particular, we're having a really hard time procuring the essential AC equipment, mostly transformers are the long lean item here, but inverters are also a long time as well. And so, our goal and our plan and our desires to still build this project, we're very motivated on it, but unfortunately, I think it's probably looking like a 2023 build instead of '22 for the supply chain reasons. Would, would very much appreciate if you guys were, would grant us an exception.
All right, any questions of the applicant? Since this is just an extension, I don't have to have a public hearing for extensions. So if there's no questions, someone like to entertain a motion?
Like to make a motion to accept application number...
Two zero one nine?
Two zero one nine dash zero zero two one SE. This is an extension for six fourteen Endicott Street East in Laconia. This is for a, a solar panel setup.
Garden.
And as it were, we're having the people having problems with the supply chain, and I think it's reasonable to grant this extension. Is this a six-months extension or...
Correct.
Correct. So, I move that we grant it.
All right, the six-month extension. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second. Any discussion of the motion? There being none, all those in favor? Okay, pass is five zero.
All right, you pass, Carson.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Dean. Thank you to the board, and yeah, once again, I'm very thankful, and if you guys ever want to talk about the project, I'm, you know, got, got an open policy, so would love to chat about it. But thank you very much, and have a good night.
Thank you, and you have a good night also.
All right, thank you.
The next one is actually also an extension. Steve
Oh.
Just got put in the wrong section.
Okay, I was gonna say, I don't have anything for that. That's all right. Next on the agenda is for an extension, a twenty-nine Sweet Briar Way, request to extend the approval for a variance from Article Five, Section two thirty-five dash thirty-six, and Attachment Three, Table Two, to allow additional lock coverage over previous approved twenty percent. Oh, this is the one we continued from last month.
Correct.
All right, I do have that one. Current regulations allow forty percent, but under a PUD, it was twenty percent at the time. The applicant is here. Please come forward, introduce yourself for the record, and tell us how we might help you.
Hi, for the record, my name is Peter Girardi. My wife, Gail, couldn't make it tonight, but I want to say thank you and for allowing me to come to the meeting, and sorry, we didn't make it last, last meeting, there was some confusion on our part. My, my GM thought that he, we did need to show up, so I apologize, and thank you for moving it forward and not canceling it. It's been a, it's been a rough ride, so I appreciate it. So I'm just looking to extend another six months. We've already begun digging, so this should just be, you know, I'm hoping it'll be done in three to four months.
So ground's broken already, and you're just... Is it necessary if ground's broken, he's got his permit? He...
In this case, yes, because he, he's technically expired, but, you know, because you continued it, it's, it's still in the force, so we need to at least cover up to current, so...
Okay. Any questions of the applicant? Okay. Since this is also an extension, I don't have to open it up to the public, so therefore, I'd like to entertain a motion.
Make a motion to accept the extension for a Z two zero one nine dash zero zero one variance for twenty-nine Sweet, Sweet Briar Way. This again, the they've started on the project, and they plan on finishing it, so this is once again a six-month extension.
Okay. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Discussion of the motion. There being none, all those in favor of the motion. Pass is five zero. Good luck.
Thank you, thank you, everyone. Appreciate it. Have a great summer.
All right, my package is shy. Okay. The next application is application two zero two two dash zero zero one eight variance. It's one sixty-four Pogus Park Road, variance request from Article Six, Section two thirty-five dash thirty-five B, side setback to allow for the construction of a shed that would encroach into the ten-foot setback. Is the applicant here? Please come forward, introduce yourself for the record, and tell us how we might be of service.
Hi, my name is Ruben Kitov, and like the previous one, I apologize, we weren't aware that we needed to be here. Our contractor said that he thought we shouldn't, we didn't need to be here, so, you know, thanks for letting us come one more time. We're, we want to build a shed, and we ordered a shed, and then we realized that there's a ten-foot setback from the property line. And actually, I didn't put in the application, but I brought, like, pictures of the property, and I can pass it around if you'd like. What you see is, this is the house, and we have trees already here to the side of that fence, and if we choose this ten-foot setback and put it to the ten-foot setback, it'll sort of be in the middle of this area. It'll really encroach, like, it'll be difficult to get around. And if we ever want to take a trailer and get to the water to put a watercraft or anything in the water, it's gonna be difficult to get through. I think it's also, like, won't look that good to be, like, right in the middle of the lawn versus closer to the trees that are there now. It's on the right side of the property, if you're, like, facing the water. I can pass this around if you would like to look at it. Shed is, looks very similar to what the house looks like, so should be aesthetic, hopefully. And I don't think it's gonna bother the neighbor on that other side, because he's got those trees next to them anyway.
Okay.
Well, you answered the question that I had. I went up to look at the property, and I was wondering why you couldn't have put the shed more in the middle, but you gave me a good explanation tonight.
Right.
Enough open space there. You really don't need to be encroach on a setback, but with what you want to do, I can understand.
Right, that, that area, like, this is the only, like, low area where I could, like, come with a trailer and put, like, a watercraft in, and otherwise, like, it'll be very difficult to do that, and so it, like, it won't be able to get, I mean, we could get around, but it'll be a lot more difficult to get around the other side of the lawn and take, like, a sharp turn, so this would be more useful for us to have it that way.
How far, I don't have a drawing in front of me. I think we had this last
Last week.
Month, so I don't have a drawing in front of me. How close do you want to encroach upon the setback?
So already, so there, there's a fence there. The trees are about four feet from the fence, and there's another couple of feet we need to be from the trees anyway, so we want the edge to be at six feet from the edge of the property, from, like, the property line versus ten feet. So the trees, the, the tree line is four feet on your abutters property? Right. It's, it's on, on our side, like, away from where the actual property line is. Looking at Google Maps, and there was no tree line there, at least when this... Yeah, it's new trees that we planted now, because these guys, they ended up... You planted trees on your neighbor's property? No, it's our prop, so there's, I'll explain. This is like a really tall building that they built next to us, and we wanted more privacy. To the right of these trees is a fence that you see in that yellow drawing. To the right of that fence is the property line, so the trees are four feet into my property, just because there was a fence there. So you put the trees to cover the fence? Right. And so that's, so that's why now the shed is that far into the property? Correct, and, and I think it's, it would make sense, from my perspective, to put the shed close to the trees and not, like, in the middle of the lawn. So that's, like, that's my request, and hopefully you guys will be able to grant it.
Marcia, can you pass that down, please?
Could I ask, why not the other side of your house? I noticed you have some space on the left-hand side of the house.
You're right. So this is, like, it's hard to see maybe, but there's an area with a little bit of sand. This is where we come down with the kayaks or...
Right.
So the shed would be where we take the life jackets or all sorts of, like, there will be things that we keep there that are related to the lake, and otherwise, it's walking across all, like, we wanted to make it as accessible and easy to use as possible, so we, we thought that location would be better.
I have a question. Have you spoken to your neighbors? Are they, you know, in agreement with what you're doing?
Yeah, they don't have any issue with it. Like, we're good relations with both neighbors.
See, the house is pretty damn close to the property line. Put it down there. This, this the road here. Oh, that's the front yard. That's the front yard, yep. This house is so close to the property line already.
Any other questions of the applicant at this time? There being none, you may sit for just a second, because it might be a quick second.
No problem.
I'd like to open it up to the public and ask if anybody from the public wishes to speak for or against this application. Please come forward at this time and introduce yourself for the record. Let the record indicate no one from the public wishes to speak for or against this application, therefore, I'll bring it back to the board. Any further questions of the applicant? Questions of the applicant? Any closing comments, sir?
No, I've pretty much said everything, and just appreciate if you can grant this, and, yeah, that's it. Should I sit down or stay up?
Yep.
Thank you.
With that, I'm gonna close it to the public and bring it to the board for discussion.
Initially, when I saw the plan that Marcia has, I was kind of against it, but I can understand why Ruben wants to have it, and he's only asking for four feet, not a total, the total ten feet of the shed, so I'm kind of inclined to grant it.
Did the neighbor receive
Yes.
notification of this meeting?
Yes.
I would say that there are lack of presence here is a note that they are at least not against.
They would have been on the abutters list. All abutters receive notification of all changes set forth.
I agree with Mike. When I initially saw this diagram, I was opposed to it because I was really concerned about the neighbor, but I think the presence of the trees as camouflage also helps, as well as it's only four feet.
Okay. Any other discussion, Michael?
Sounds like he's not putting it right up against the trees, so there'll be room to go around it and maintain it.
Okay. If there's no further discussion, I would like to get a motion.
I'll make the motion that we grant the variance Z zero two zero two two dash zero zero one eight, one sixty-four Pogus Park Road, as the owners requested. Only four feet, not more than four feet variance, so the tool shed could go in. It's a little bit of a hardship, because those are all narrow lots, and it's only going to be pretty good if everybody, so I'm all for it.
Okay. So we have a motion?
I'll second that.
We have a second? Discussion of the motion? There being none, all those in favor of the motion? Pass is five zero. Enjoy your shed.
Thank you very much.
Make sure to get your building permit, if it's needed or whatever, so...
We got it. Thank you.
Okay. Now we move into the next one. I don't really have any paperwork for that.
I had a bunch of pictures last...
I got the old application, but... So, anyway. The next application is the State of New Hampshire Appeals is thirty-three, let me go ahead and... It was thirty-three Clearwater Place, okay? They were asking for the special exception in the ADA, not ADA, uh...
Short-term lodging.
Short-term lodging. And the original application was denied, and it went to an appeals board, and it's now back before us. The, the appeals board decided that we have erred on a couple of our decisions that we used, so therefore, it comes back to us as a rehearing, not a rehearing, but we have to start from the very beginning and go through it one more time. And we'll start with there. So if the applicant, is that the applicant in the Zoom meeting? Would you introduce yourself for the record, and tell us how we may help you, since this is a brand-new application?
Thank you very much. I appreciate you telling me you were personally, our office has been in trouble with some medical issues, so we thought best if you were here and I share and consider the impact.
Thank you for being here. I said thank you for being.
Thank you. Okay, so what we thought that you do is to kind of give you a little bit of the background, and we delivered a, something made from days of tea, okay? If you were to...
Set the exceptions in order to grant it.
And we put that together to be clear, we had a lot of discussions, obviously, the court has made a decision. We have a copy of that here. This evening, we'd like to see it from Bureau of Labor, hoping that when we go back and really talk about a couple of areas that you all have, to see if we can get to the end of it, which has been around quite a while. So, what I thought I would do is, it's okay, it's only two parts, and you can ask whatever questions you want, and we can handle that rules.
That sounds great. Just, just one thing. I'm gonna go ahead and let you speak about everything, then I'm gonna have to open it up to the public and take public input, and then we'll bring it back like we did before, and we'll have final questions with you, and then we'll move on with the voting process and stuff, okay?
Fine, thank you very much. We will, we will start.
Is there a way to turn that up a little bit?
Trying to make sure we can, you can hear us.
Can you hear us all right?
Yes. Well, yep.
So... We just started, we, we're supposed to say to the county, we're selling that, we're talking to the board, how the county board decided to vacate is only the board's denial, and as remedy, my client's application for a special exception of short-term lodging to the zoning board of appeal. Housing of the board recently finally become well-stated, it is, we all know that by reading the document. The housing of the board also recognized that the zoning boards insurance of the, of short-term lodging require imposing reasonable conditions as allowed legally more inspection two thirty-five dash forty-one dash ten, including those imposed by us and are normally imposed by the planning requirement. The housing board agreed that the issues from the county had originally suggested as part of our September twenty-two thousand twenty-one, obtained from the signature of the county that was rest concern raised for granting the exception of short-term lodging at long-term time. In that spirit, our client is agreeable following reasonable conditions and approval of a short-term lodging exception application, being imposed as conditions, whether or not you can see that application, but that is just those two. Number one, parking on the place, i.e. no parking in the street. Number two, occupancy limitation, i.e. a lot of people in the house are required by the planning department as opposed to six minutes current advertising by our rental department, when we were open for six minutes and twelve, which is illegal regulation. At guaranteed city noise ordinance, we will follow that office. Therefore, many municipal track service by utilization are virtual management company to remove excess trash on Saturday when guest leave. Finally, installing a fence to prevent accidental trespass and to help prevent movement. These conditions are recommended in the district's mixed city ordinance and recommendations by the planning departments for what is possible. I make these recommendations on behalf of my client to look forward to the zoning board granting its special exception application with these reasonable conditions applied. I would just like to say, I agree with that. We have listened closely to what we have discovered through the volume, and we have listened to the hearing we had in conference, and we met and went over the information to make sure we have met the rules of the county, so it's taken very nice, and so they said, how they step forward, we have listened, we have learned, and we are ready to go. So thank you, Mr. Chief.
Okay. I'm gonna read back for the public here so that, because trying to hear everything you said was a little hard, probably, for the people... I'm going to read back for the public here so that, because trying to hear everything you said was a little hard probably for the people sitting in the audience. So I'm going to read it back and listen to what I'm saying and make sure that's what you're saying. The occupational limitations, twelve people in the house as required by the planning department as opposed to the sixteen currently advised by our rental company, advertised by the rental company, correct? Here to the city noise ordinance? Is that correct? Supplementing municipal trash service by utilizing the rental management company to remove excess trash on Saturdays when guests leave? And installing a fence to prevent accidental trespass and to help reduce noise?
We have one more condition. Parking limitation? No parking in the street.
Okay. I was just reading the letter you had sent me and I didn't see that part, but the parking limitation is to parking in the driveway and not on the street. And the management company will be managing that also. Okay. So that's basically some of the conditions that are being discussed as part of this. Are there any other questions of the board to the applicant at this time?
I'm curious if the applicant is aware that there's covenants and restrictions in Clearwater.
Doesn't affect us.
Well, they say they're going to put up a fence and it seems to be against the rules.
We don't control the covenant of any of the homeowners' associations. Therefore, that will be between them and the homeowners' association on whatever approvals. But as conditions, they would have to follow the conditions that forth if this is approved or when this is approved.
I have a question.
Yes. Is this a question to the applicant?
Yes.
Okay.
How long has this been used as a Airbnb or VRBO or whatever other platform it's advertised off? How many years has it been used as short-term rental?
Well. I can't speak for how long because there are two three this morning. Both of them might have been standing there at the end of the meeting. Our client, my client, has had that not that long and there are some issues. We have the hardware here in the works. And so we can give you a little bit more.
Um, in our, in our document here, it says the property has been used for short-term lodging since 2014. And that was by prior owners before our clients.
I do believe there was documentation provided to the board at, at one of the earlier meetings and stuff to go by. That provided credible evidence to it has been used for Airbnb-type, short-term lodging, Airbnb's company, so short-term lodging. Any other questions of the applicant at this time? There being none, I'm going to go ahead and open it up to the public and ask if anybody from the public wishes to speak for or against this application, please come forward at this time. Introduce yourself for the record.
How do you do all? My name's John Hildreth. I live at thirty-nine Clearwater Place with my wife and we are the next-door neighbors to this property. I wrote a letter or an email to the board. I hope you all have it. And the housing authority as well as a layman could read it. Basically, the, the issue was turned back to you because basically what happened in the past doesn't mean it's going to happen in the future, which seems a little naive to me, but that's just me. One of the remedies that they talked about was the installation of a fence, which is against the covenants that exist in perpetuity for the seventeen lots of the Clearwater development. And I can read, to maintain harmony with other lots and open spaces, only natural base, only natural barriers such as hedgings and plantings may be used for fencing, no artificial fencing in the Clearwater development. And section two, which is the, in the covenants, opens with the first general covenants, to preserve the character of Clearwater as a residential community. Each lot shall be used for residential purposes only. And maintain landscaping, that sort of thing. To maintain harmony with the other lots and open spaces, only natural barriers such as hedging. Artificial fencing will not be permitted except for fencing around a pool. Provided that such fencing is constructed within ten feet of the outer edge. There are many other covenants, such as for the dock space. We've had serious issues of safety with the renters taking off at full speed from the dock. In one case last summer, there was a boat pulling two rafts with two small children on both the rafts and hammered down right away from the dock, which is against boating laws and obviously dangerous. Another thing is that no docks, no slip or dock space shall be rented or used by a person not an owner or resident of the lot, except to other owners in Clearwater. So there, there, there's, I guess. We bought our lot from the original owner of thirty-three Clearwater. And at the time of the sale, we were involved in many things and I was told by that owner that there were no covenants. Otherwise, I would have brought this up much earlier. The, the, not only have the, was it put in originally in ninety-seven that there will, it would be residential only and no fencing? I think that should preclude the use of this property as a short-term rental. And to further that, in the, in the original covenants, they maintain or remain in perpetuity unless altered or terminated by an instrument in writing recorded in the Belknap County Registry of Deeds executed by the owners of two-thirds of the land within Clearwater. Which is kind of a strange way to write it. It's not two-thirds of the owners, it's two-thirds of owners of two-thirds of the land area, which the land area is approximately twenty acres. And yesterday, after talking with an awful lot of owners, we filed an amendment with the Registry of Deeds that puts a limit of one hundred and eighty days on any rental. So that's attached to the covenant and every deed for the seventeen lots has the original covenants and the new amendment to it. And it was, it was signed by twelve of the seventeen owners and, which represented eighty-five and a half percent of the land area.
Okay.
So with all due respect, I would hope that the zoning board would deny the, the applicant. And I understand they have not, they are not pursuing the resident as they were in the past. But also in their application, they listed me as the emergency contact for their rental property, which is kind of odd. I don't know if that has any bearing on it. But I would certainly ask to, ask the board to deny any the application for short-term rentals as these covenants existed long before.
Okay, let me clarify a few items for, if you don't mind, and Dean, if I misspeak, please correct me. One, the fencing. We did do not in the, anywhere in here discuss the material of the fence, okay? That is between the planning department and the applicant. If this is approved, they can determine what fence material is acceptable to both, okay? When we say fence, it doesn't necessarily mean a panel fence, a chain link fence, or anything like that. It could be a natural barrier or whatever, but I'm not going to speak for them. They control with that. We do the requiring of a fence, okay? Number two, the docks. The dock is not at discussion tonight. It has no bearing on what the use of this type of house is being requested for. That is an internal issue between your homeowners' association or whatever it is and the person who owns that house. Okay, so if this is approved, then y'all have an issue. Y'all need, as a homeowners' association, discuss that with the homeowner. Okay, the city does not get involved in that type of situation. Okay? The third thing you said about covenants on the deeds and stuff that y'all have added and stuff like that. Once again, we do not get involved in that. That's legal issues between the homeowners' association and the homeowner. So if the homeowner is not in compliance with the deed or deed restrictions and stuff like that, that is not up to the city to take care of it. That is up to the homeowners' association to take care of it, okay?
All right.
So I understand your, I can understand your concerns, but those concerns have no bearing basically on the application.
Okay.
Those are legal questions the homeowner's association has with the homeowner. You see what I'm saying?
So that's strictly a legal matter?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
To the best of my knowledge, it's a legal matter between those two parties.
Okay.
Okay?
Sure. The I guess all the other issues that, that stood were erased by the housing board. The safety, the overcrowding. I also put in my letter that this applicant flouted the denial of the application last time and continued to rent well into late fall and rented in, in January without the application.
Now, may I also add to this and Dean, please correct me once again if I misspeak. All right. The housing board did send this back to us because they thought our decision was flawed in that area of what we were basing the denial on, okay? Now to say this, in their application forms for short-term rental, there are catches within that process that takes care of a lot, hopefully takes care of a lot of this. Actions that would be brought up, parking in the street, noisy parties, exceeding the people's limits and stuff like that. They have plans in place, not just particularly for this property, but for all short-term rentals that are able to apply for the short-term rental permit through the city. They keep their database set up for it so that they can see it. And if there's not compliance being done, then they can revoke their permit and they will not be allowed to use it as a short-term rental. I'm not sure for how long that is, but once again, I think there is, and that's why the board based their decision, the appeal board based their decision on the fact that there was stuff set in place by the city to cover that. And Dean, if you would like to add to that.
The only thing I would like to add, Mr. Chairman, is once the appeal was filed, the, the city could not enforce the ordinance any longer because they're in that, that window with the, with the appeal process. So I understand what you're saying about what occurred in the fall and over the winter. And we were aware of it, but because the appeal was in process, we could not enforce.
Oh, I was under the impression that the appeal went in February or March.
No, it was actually filed, it was actually filed, they didn't hear it for, for a little while, but it was actually filed within the required timeframe of, of the original denial.
Okay.
Okay.
All righty.
I wish there was something else I could tell you, but at least you're getting the facts as they are.
Sure.
All right.
So even though that each deed has these covenants, that's nothing to do with the city?
That's correct.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Hi.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and the rest of the board. It's nice to see you all. My name is Insha Hawk. I am the owner and resident at forty Clearwater Place, Catty Corner across the street from thirty-three Clearwater with the applicant with Doris and Gary. I had written a couple of letters to the board expressing the concerns that my husband, Alan, and myself have regarding the property. We have, in the most recent letter, summarized what some of those concerns were, but the biggest one really is from our perspective, an issue with safety. Even after hearing the, the changes that were made by the applicant, that doesn't still address the concern for safety that I had and witnessed three times over this past renting season. Both of my, my spouse and myself are physicians in this community and we take call for our patients and respond to medical emergencies, which include cardiac emergencies for Concord Hospital Laconia. And on three separate occasions with renters that were not in excess of twelve occupants, we were completely blocked out of exiting or entering our driveway. And that is a really major concern for safety in terms of our ability to provide that service to the community for medical emergencies and to be responding immediately. When we purchased the home at forty Clearwater Place, it was with the intent to be very quickly able to get to the hospital. It's a two-mile distance and it's a six-minute drive. That is, in our eyes, the, probably the reason that we chose that home is for the proximity to the hospital for responding to these emergencies as we were both working for the hospital at that time and still are. Even with the occupancy reduction, we still had inability to exit or enter our home on three separate occasions throughout that renting period. That poses, I think, a very significant safety concern for our community, our patients, our hospital, and for anyone who accesses those services and our ability to respond appropriately to those services in a timely manner. Because the difference of six minutes of driving to the hospital versus a forty-five-minute walk to the hospital is not a situation that I think anyone wants to have a liability for someone having a cardiac event or any really medical emergency that requires either one of us to respond immediately to, especially given our proximity, which is why we given our proximity, which is why we had purchased the home originally.
And the only thing, if I may respond a little bit, is one of the major conditions, if this is approved, is the fact that they can no longer park in the street.
Right.
Okay? Now, with that being said, if they do not park in the street, then there should not be any blockage of your driveway coming and going. And if you find yourself in a situation where they are parking in the street, you have several options, even if you're not in the midst of your emergency call, okay? You can, A, you can call the city and inform them that they are parking in the street, okay? There's going to be phone numbers provided where the, the oversea-
Agent.
The agent shall respond and come to this property and make these people disappear, okay? And that. Now, with that being said, you should have not any other differences than a normal resident with their cars in parking, okay? So if this was just a normal residence parking there, then, and they're not parking in the street either, you should not have this issue anymore, based on the acknowledgement from the applicant that they intend to abide by those conditions and that with the process set up by the city for the permitting, because I know it doesn't give you a hundred percent confidence, but that's all we can do for the moment, is try and make sure they live up to their end of the bargain and work within the permitting process itself and let the city take care of this. And if you don't get any responses at that point in time, you can call the police. And then we have a police report of the actions being taken.
I appreciate the input. I think that's really significant to hear. I would like to have it stated that when this happened for the third time, and it was a mix of boat trailers that, and cars that were blocking completely our way, and there weren't that many, but because of the size of trailers as being so big, we were fully blocked of even entering or exiting because of the shuffling of the cars to get, whatever cars were the first towards the house to get out. I did call the police. And when I called, they, I spoke to the police chief and was informed that it wasn't under their authority to interact with that because it's a road that is under the city's management. So that's when I came to the meeting most recently regarding this application. So that's really where a lot of my concern is coming from, that I did make a call to the police, I did make a call to the board, and it happened three separate times. And I'm hoping this never happens when there is a cardiac emergency, when there is a medical emergency, that we're not able to respond and there is a liability that is undue for a patient or family in this community.
I hope so too, ma'am. Anything else we can?
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anybody else from the public who wished to speak for or against this application? That the record indicate no one else wished to speak for or against this application? Therefore, I bring it back to the board. Any further questions of the applicant? Now, I do. As far as the parking is concerned, that includes boat trailers and all kinds of different trailers, any kind of trailer that is pulled by a vehicle or non-vehicle or whatever, that is also included as part of not parking in the street? And that's a question to the applicant.
Can we, 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 we sent you-
Can't hear.
Okay. Basically, I'm going to, kind of, because it's hard to hear what you're saying. He said it includes, no parking means no parking in the street for anything whatsoever? And they have the full intention of making sure that happens to the best of their ability? Is that basically what you said?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
I have a question. I mean, if they say they have parking spaces for nine cars, if those nine cars have a trailer, a car and a trailer is like two and a half spaces, I mean-
If it doesn't fit in the driveway-
Okay.
It doesn't go.
Okay.
Any other questions of the applicant? Any closing comments from the applicant?
I'd like to thank you all for your time. I hope you'll be here for us. I'm going to start calling in a second, but thank you. I hope you come there and then vote for the vote on the second page, vote one by one. And then take what, and when I go forward, and resolve this matter and before, finish. Thank you all.
Thank you, and if I could reach you, I have a throat lozenge here for you. Okay. With that, I'm going to close it to the public and bring it to the board for discussion.
Clearwater, is this street covered by HOA, or is this an accepted city street that the city maintains?
I'm pretty sure it's an accepted city street.
So in that, there's rules about parking in a street? Doesn't need to be decided that it is a street, it is-
Doesn't matter if it is or isn't a street. There's no parking on that street as far as that residence is concerned, so-
Or any others?
Any other people? We're not talking about any other house on that street other than thirty-three Clearwater.
Mr. Chair, I have a question for Dean. Dean, when the city decided to create this ordinance about short-term lodging in residential zones, did they give any thought to communities that have covenants? And why wouldn't they, in a sense, take a priority? I can hear our chairman's comments about that it has nothing to do with zoning, but on the other hand, I don't understand why the covenants don't play some role in the decision for the city.
Right. The, just from a broad sense, and I'll get into the specifics of this case, but in a broad sense, covenants are a civil matter. They are between the property owners, as the chair said, individual property owners and the association, whatever that association may be, condo, homeowners association, beachfront associa-, whatever it may be, whatever the covenants are related to. That is strictly a civil matter. We do not referee any of those items. We don't referee boundary line disputes or any of those things. So from that standpoint, we don't enforce them, we don't referee them. However, they were part of the consideration when we passed the ordinance, knowing that there were a number of condo and homeowners associations in the city that had a variety of either covenants or rules in their association that either allowed it or prevented it. And they also have the opportunity to amend their rules under whatever the rules are set out in their homeowners association or condo association that says, this is how you change the rules. You know, if you don't want to have any pink shutters in your condo association, then you can pass a rule that says that, but you've got to have X number of owners that approve that. And, you know, different associations have different thresholds.
Yes.
But whatever they are. So we were aware when we passed the ordinance that some associations had rules and some did not. Just within Southdown, some of the villages have no rules, some of them have a seven-day limitation, some have a thirty-day limitation. I think that's the most strictest one. I don't think there are, I'm not aware of any that have a complete ban on short-term rentals, however they define them. We were aware of that, but we also, you know, this is not just short-term rentals that we don't enforce covenants. It's any covenant, you know? It's just not our purview to enforce them. So I, I'm not sure if that answers your question or not.
It does, but now, just a little follow-up on what you're saying, though. So the city doesn't get involved with it, and let's say the vote tonight is to allow for this to occur, but yet their covenants would say no, then a legal battle ensues because we have two different rulings here. So how do we decide a winner? How does that work?
Well, we would, we do not decide a winner.
Oh, I know, but I'm saying, so it, I can just see an owner saying, that the zoning board granted us to have this, but yet my covenants don't. So I'm just wondering, where does it go from here?
It would go to court.
Okay.
And there are a number of avenues that that could take. There's different legal strategies that one side versus the other could take, and I'm, you know, I'm not going to speculate on which ones the particular parties may or may not employ. But it would be a matter of filing a case in court, would be a superior court, to have the judge decide what the covenants mean and what they don't mean, and just as an aside, and, you know, when I read the covenants that were sent to us, my personal opinion and professional opinion, for, you know, that and two fifty will get you a cup of coffee, you know, at some places. But, you know, we do deal with these kinds of things all the time. I think there are some terms that are being used that are ambiguous, that could be interpreted different ways. And I'll give you an example, and again, I'm not trying to make anybody's legal case, but just to give you an example because it came up tonight. To say that a doc cannot be used by anyone but the resident, that is, you could interpret it the way it was interpreted by the gentleman at the podium, or you could interpret it in the way that the person who's in that house for that given moment is the resident, whether they're renting it by three days, a week, or whether they rent it six months at a time, which if they were there six months, I don't think anybody would say they're not a resident of that house. I mean, you know, you could make the case that they're not, but it would be difficult. As time goes on, as more time passes, it becomes more difficult. So that's what I'm just saying, that there are terms that are used that are ambiguous, and that's why we, as a city, we don't get, because then we're making decisions and interpretations, and that's not our job. However, if I could change gears just a little bit, as part of our permitting process for short-term lodging, which we have not got to this point yet with this particular application, because it's been tied up here, if you vote for the special exception and then we issue the short-term lodging permit, there are conditions on that that are covered under the ordinance. One of those things is parking. And as part of the process, we send the approval permit also to the abutters. The same abutters that get notified that this meeting was occurred will also be notified of the approval, and on there, there is a list of requirements for the applicant to meet and a notification to the abutters that if they don't meet these conditions, here's what you need to do. And unfortunately, the onus is on the abutters, because they are there and it is happening, you know, in real time. For example, parking. If there's parking on the side of the street and they're not supposed to be there, then you probably can wait till the next business day. If the street is truly blocked, then you call the police, and I'm not going to dispute what was said, but I have had multiple conversations with the police chief myself about this exact kind of situation, and they should take care of it. If it truly is blocked and it's emergency, and, you know, I think proper words need to be used. You need to be able to say to the dispatcher, I'm a physician on call, I cannot get out of my driveway. If I needed to go to emergency, I could not get out of my driveway. Something needs to be done now before I get a call for an emergency. That is different than saying, there's people parked in my, in my street and I can't get out of my driveway. That's a different message, and I don't know what, how the message was delivered, and, you know, but there are different ways of delivering the message that probably have the police act in a different manner. The other part of our permit process is an educational process with the applicant. And we have had discussions with some applications that have had these problems with parking in the past, and we have suggested to them that they post, you know, the rules of the house in conspicuous places in the house. And one of those rules is, there's no parking in the street. Not by you, not by anybody that comes to visit you for two hours or for a day. There's no parking in the street, period. And if there is, then, you know, if the property owner wants to institute a rule that says, if our agent has to get out and tell you to move those cars, then the rental ends at that moment and you're gone, however they want to enforce it themselves. But it is, it is an educational process that we go through with the applicant to make sure that they understand what the rules are and what the expectations are. And I can tell you that we have over ninety permits for short-term rental in the city at the moment, and since we've instituted the permit process, we have not had one single complaint about any short-term rental that has a permit. So I think the educational process and the list of expectations that we have has been very effective. Every single complaint that we get about short-term rental is about a place that is not permitted. It's been that simple.
Okay, so this permitting process just is new?
Well, it was instituted when we instituted the ordinance. It was done at the same time. We've had some permits out for almost two years now.
Oh, but this property here, did it apply for-
They applied last year, which is what kicked off this whole process, because the zone that they're in requires a special exception, and in order to qualify for the special exception, there's a couple of different ways to do that. In their case, it was they've been doing it for more than five, that property has been doing it for more than five years.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion?
Yes. I just want to go on the record, I am in favor of short-term rentals. I think they do good bringing business to the city, but if we granted this variance for Clearwater, we're opening up a can of worms that all the residents of Clearwater are going to have to sue this party to stop their rentals because it's against their covenants. And it's a can that the city has no control over, but granting it opens that can, and this board would be responsible to those people of Clearwater saying, well, we had to say yes.
Well-
Now you got to fight them.
The board is not responsible for any covenants whatsoever, so to put that onus on the board is, for any application, would not- on the board is, for any application, would not be appropriate, okay? Especially if it is outside the preview of the zoning board.
I understand, you explained to Marsha quite well, you know, how we are not in charge of that, but this has been a nuisance property, you know, the two providers that live across the street, plus Mr. Hildreth, now they have to fight this property if we should grant it. And if it is granted, I would ask they put another automatic expiration date on it, so they have to reapply in a year, in case there is trouble over the year if it's granted.
How long does a permit last?
It's life.
Two years.
It's two years, and then we have a renewal.
Yeah.
There is a renewal, okay. I thought, once it's granted, it's there forever.
It's a, it's a two-year permit.
So, you have to get a permit every two years.
Yeah, and there is a, within the ordinance, there is provisions for first complaint, second complaint, third complaint, and what actions that we would take correspondingly.
Any other discussion?
I think, I think we all feel the humanity of the, of what we're hearing here from both sides. You know, people have the right, they bought the property, they have the right to do it, they own and own property. These people also, I feel the humanity of where they are, and at the same time, we're saying to these people here, "Well, you know what? We have no responsibility over this, and that's the way that it is."
No, I don't think anybody here is saying they don't have the responsibility, okay? What we have to do is read the conditions of approval, our disapproval, and have facts to back up both.
Well, I think, I think the demonstration down here, I, I understand.
And the demonstration, this is why this is a new run. The previous stuff that was discussed and stuff was overturned by the appeal board, saying due to the fact that there's policies set in place in the permitting process of this, that takes into account everything that we've said was an issue. So, if the board was to have allowed the permitting to happen and all those conditions that come from the permitting process to retain their permit and stuff, these issues wouldn't be here. And what they indicated was, you can't use past history when you have a process in place to take care of all these issues. Prior to the-
Now that makes sense to me now.
Prior to that permit, and the agreement that is being set forth, okay? They couldn't control it, and no one was in actual control of the situation, so it went sideways, okay? And that's what brought everybody down to the table and stuff. So, through this, through all the legal realities and stuff, they're coming to agreement and realization of what we're going to vote on, okay? Anything else? Did I explain that okay?
Yes.
Dean, is that all right? Okay.
I had read that quote, and I, and I did not understand how that overlapped, but now I, but now I do.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Because I know this is heartwarming discussion, and I, and it's, in every situation, I want the board to understand this, no matter what the application is, there's always going to be someone not happy, okay? Always. You try your best to keep in fact the emotion out of it, and you want to make sure you're looking at the facts as they are before you, okay? And make your determination on the facts.
Yes, ma'am.
You know, I was just, when I'm reading what is before me in, in this booklet about the variance for the short-term, I, it, it meets it. I, I don't know how you can say no.
That's the point, and-
Unfortunately for me, because I, I really feel for the, for the abutters, but according to that document-
You see, the one way you can look at this is, even though this has been a long, this application has been a long drawn-out process, okay? Look at it as it is a, a fresh approach to something. A new applicant who hasn't, they just want to open it up, let's say, and have their temporary thing, and how would you address that one? If they could prove all the things, in this case, they had the information of it being rented for five years at least as a short-term rental, all right? And then all the other conditions are, are said to be met, and with the conditions that can be applied to this, which were the parking, no parking in the street, okay? The limit of the household guests, the noise, and the fence.
And the picking up-
Mind you, we're not telling them what kind of fence that'll be between the two groups, to figure that out, okay?
And the extra trash pickup.
And the extra trash pickup. That covers pretty much all the issues that we had. And then they're given two years with, if, if it's voted yes, they get the permit, and they do that, they're given two years to prove their worthiness before they have to, to go before the planning board and get, or planning department and get their new permit. So, there's checks and balances and stuff like that, okay?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chair, I, I would suggest to the board, instead of using the word fence, that you use screening.
Yes. Yes.
It could be a fence, but it may not be.
Could be a hedge.
Yep.
Whatever, that's why I was saying, you know, in this instance, we're not determining what a fence is, okay? So, any other discussion? If there being none, I'd like to entertain a motion. Okay, I'd like to make a motion that we approve this application, based on the fact that they've provided us with the documentation to show that it's been used for five years as a short-term rental property. They have provided that it, the usage of the municipal services and stuff shall be taken care of, it will not use any more water, shouldn't use any more fire, rescue, police than normal, that a normal residence should use, and the trash pickup should be augmented also by a private party picking up on Saturdays the trash, so there shouldn't be tremendous amount of trash barrels, it should meet the city code, and trash being floated all over. I would like to add five conditions to this approval. One would be there be no exception to no parking in the street by any vehicle, trailer, or any obstacle that would hinder the free flow of vehicles in the street. That they limit the occupancy to twelve people for the rental of the house. That the trash is augmented by their agent, or whoever they so determine, will pick up the trash on Saturdays. And the last one would be that a screening of some type that is workable between the planning department and the applicant will be put in place. Is there any other conditions that people would, the board would see fit that may or may not? There being none, that's a motion.
I'll second that.
We have a second. Discussion of the motion. There being none, all those in favor of the motion? Motion passes three-two. There you have it. You have your three-two vote for approval, okay?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, for all your-
Okay, and you'll follow up with the planning, planning department for all the permits and stuff like that necessary?
Yes.
All right. Thank you much.
Thank you.
Just be a second, and I'll read the next application. Clean up this.
It's Chinese words. It's Chinese words. Sitting in the audience, that must be the order. He's on the council.
Oh, yes. Walk one.
He's gone now.
Yeah, that's one. Yeah.
That's a nerve, that's a true.
All right. Are we ready for the next application? Next application is two zero two-two dash zero zero two-one, it's a variance, sixty-six MacArthur Street. Variance request from Article Six, Section two thirty-five dot thirty-five B, to allow for the construction of a one-car garage to be built within the side setback. If the applicant is here, please come forward, introduce yourself for the record.
Good evening. My name is James Pori, and I am applying for a variance to build a one-car garage in the setbacks, rear and side. The side setback would be ten feet instead of fifteen, and the rear setback would be twelve feet instead of fifteen. This would allow me to still use my driveway, my existing paved driveway, without encroaching on my grass area, and allowing me to still have two cars parked in the driveway. I just want you to know that there's four existing garages around my house, and three of them are on the property line, and the one, if you have the picture, you can see, is six feet from my fence. So, I'm not asking for something abnormal that is not already in the neighborhood. And if you look at the diagram or the picture that you can see, I also, at the end of my driveway, it's obstructed by this large tree, but there is a shed there, and the existing shed there is, one corner is ten feet away from the property line, the other one is seven feet. So, it would comply with everything that I have going now.
So, do you know how far on the side setback you're going to go in?
It would be five feet in.
At your deepest point?
Yes.
Five foot?
So, I, you would still have a ten-foot setback there?
Ten-foot space. He's going five feet over.
From that corner.
Is it fifteen foot side in that area?
It's technically two fronts, so it's fifteen foot.
Corner.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep, that one.
So, five foot.
How large is the garage? What's the dimension on the garage?
Fourteen by twenty-four.
Peter, it's, it's most efficient to put it, I'm sorry, Jane?
Yes.
It's most efficient to put it at an angle like that, is that?
I'm trying to, because that side right there is mostly grass, and I'm trying not to take the grass away and build another, or enlarging my driveway more than possible. So, at the angle, it would minimize me putting more pavement and taking the grass out.
Is there a structure also at the end of your driveway there?
Yes, a shed.
A shed. So, you would have to remove the shed?
No.
And, no.
Oh, sorry.
If you were to put it in that position, you would have to take that current structure down in order to put a garage in place.
But then I was also told, once I-
And you would still be in the rear setback with it?
I wouldn't be able to use that footprint if I took that garage, the shed down.
Right, but at twenty-four feet long, you would still be in the rear setback, even though you wouldn't be in the side setback no more. Hypothetically, if you took that structure down and repositioned your garage to where at the end of your driveway, because at the end of the driveway, it looks like there's a car or a truck sitting there?
It, yes.
Okay, so if you continued that path with a garage, your garage being twenty-four feet long, it appears that it would go into the rear setback anyway.
It would, yes.
You, you see my point I was trying to make? So, by trying to reposition it, you're still going to be in a setback, no matter what you did, due to the fact that there's not enough building envelope there to successfully build a garage, a usable direction and everything.
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, question? This is your property?
Yes, and that's the side of my shed.
Sure, understood. So, you have that, a fairly thick row of hedges or trees that are along the, on the road on that side?
Yes.
Okay, understood.
All surrounding, yep.
So, any other questions of the applicant at this time? There being none, have a seat for just a second.
Thank you.
I'm going to open it up to the public and ask if anybody from the public wishes to speak for or against this application, please come forward at this time and introduce yourself for the record. That the record indicate no one from the public wishes to speak for or against this application, therefore I bring it back to the board. Is there any questions that might have sparked?
I just did go by his property today, and I did notice his driveway, and I know that that's one of his concerns, so that he can-
Is this a question?
Oh, I'm sorry, you don't want to discuss, you said question, not discussion. I'm so sorry, Dean.
That's quite all right. That's why I followed up with it. Is it a question? There being none, is there any closing comments?
I guess, I just wanted to say that you, you asked about the shed and the removal of it, and maybe I could put my garage there, but if you look at the diagram- But, um, if you look at the diagram, I've, um, you're still gonna have the setback, but if I put the garage where the shed is, I would have to move the garage closer to the driveway, and that would block me from walking to my backyard from that side.
So, it'd create other issues as far as doing that?
Yes, I've already thought of it, but, thank you very much.
You're more than welcome, and thank you. With that, I'm, I'll close it to the public and bring it to the board for discussion. Marcia?
Now we can open up my mouth, can't we?
Yes.
No, I was just gonna say, I did go by, um, Mr. Porey, who is also a childhood friend of mine. Who doesn't know, you know, we've rounded Laconia forever. And I do notice that, that he's, you know, his, he's talking about his driveway and not wanting to, uh, change the asphalt, and the only way he could get a garage and keep it in alignment with the existing paved driveway would be to do what he is suggesting to do. So, it makes perfect sense to me.
Okay. Any other discussion?
And, and I'm just curious, as I'm looking at this, is this a multiplicity of driveways? Are there two driveways already on this?
Yeah, it's a duplex.
Oh, okay, picking up, I get it.
Oh, that explains a lot.
There you go. Sparked a question, I don't know.
Alright, if there's no other comments, uh, I'd like to entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to grant the variance for a rear setback of twelve feet and a side setback of ten feet, enroaching into the zoning setbacks of, uh, sixty-six MacArthur Street. It's tough, you know, small lots, it's tough to squeeze in a garage, and I'm sure a garage is well-needed. It's not really a hard zip to the neighborhood. Property value should be enhanced, and, uh, nobody's, neighbors are opposed, so I'm kind of for it. And we'll make a motion that we grant the variance.
We have motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Got a second, discussion? There being none, all those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes, enjoy your garage.
Thank you very much. Thank you, have a good evening.
You too. Next. Application two zero two two dash zero zero two three, variance five five six Weers Boulevard. Capria condos, variance request from Article Six, Section two thirty-five dash thirty-five B to allow for the construction of a second story over an existing footprint that encroaches into the side setback. The ac- applicant? Come forward and introduce yourself for the record.
Ron Shepard. I, uh, condo's at five fifty-six Weers Boulevard, and would like to go, uh, up, just the, uh, as you said, up to a second floor. First floor is awfully small. We're gonna be on the existing footprint. Already the, uh, building is in setback zones, front and rear, I mean, uh, side and rear. But we're just going up, and, uh, we hope to make this our retirement home, so we need more room.
Ron, I have the map here in front of me. What unit is yours?
Uh, five. It's, uh, map here. Is this one down here in the corner?
Very good, yep.
Could you, could you, which one?
Down here in the corner? So, it's an existing, uh, cinder block foundation with a crawl space under it. By white lin.
You don't plan to go above thirty-five feet?
No. Uh, it looks like it's gonna be around twenty-seven, twenty-eight.
Okay.
Away near thirty-five.
Is the city requiring you any, any engineering of any kind, and have you addressed that?
I believe so.
Was that a question?
Yes.
As, as part of your building permit process, we may wanna do a study on the existing foundation and make sure that it will hold the additional structure, but not part of this approval.
Yep.
Any other questions of the applicant at this time? There being none, you may sit for a brief moment. I'd like to open it up to the public and ask if anybody from the public wishes to speak for or against this application. Please come forward at this time and introduce yourself for the record. That the record indicate no one from the public wishes to speak for or against this application, therefore I bring it back to the board. Are there any questions?
So, if I may ask, this, as I understand this, this is being built on the same footprint?
Yes.
And? And it needs the, um, it needs the approval for, because it's already inside of, uh, setback issues? Is that true?
It is, yeah.
Okay, and I'm just, for my understanding.
I started at the building permit people, and they said I gotta come see this board first.
Now, since this is within shoreline protection, they also need approval from state? Do any construction whatsoever on this property?
It's an existing footprint, we're not-
Because they're gonna be doing construction around it and-
I'm not, I'm not sure, but we, we will-
I'll make it a condition if it's approved.
That if necessary, yep.
Yeah.
I'm not sure. I was trying to think whether they're, they are within the, our shoreline, uh, protection zone, um, the entire structure is already, so, uh, we're not changing the footprint from, from that standpoint. This is a increase in bulk.
Right.
So, increasing the non-conformity from that standpoint.
But he's still, because he's within, um, the state, is, is it okay to talk?
Yeah.
The, the, the first level is at fifty feet from the shoreline, and they will have to have a permit. It may not be that big of a deal, but they will need to get a permit for it.
Well- My guess is probably, but I'm not one hundred percent certain about that.
We can make that a part of condition, if it's a, an approval condition, we can make that as part of the condition that if necessary, they need to get one if necessary, and it must be approved to make this approval valid, so we can do that. Any other questions of the applicant? Any closing comments, sir?
I'd just like to say, uh, some other, uh, condos in the area, right in our association, have gone, added to their second floor, and they're right on the, you know, right on the water as well, and they didn't have to get any, uh, shoreline because it was an existing footing foundation. That's it.
We're just covering everything so to make sure that you don't have regrets after you get started. I mean, that's the last thing in the world you wanna find out is you got a regret.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, with that, I'm, I'll close it to the public, bring it to the board for discussion.
Seems like it's within line with the development that's been going on recently, utilizing the same footprint, you're not taking out any more green space or anything like that.
Also, the house that's represented in the center of the drawing, I'm looking at Google Maps right now, and that is also a two-story home as well, and I think it's very suitable and fitting for the lot.
Alright, any other discussion? If not, I'd like to entertain a motion.
Make a motion that we accept two oh two two dash zero zero two three for variance. We're, um, this is at five fifty-six Weers Boulevard condo number five. Looking at adding a second story to the building, have a little more room, and this, uh, variance is Article Six, two thirty-five dash thirty-five B. So, the variance is permitted, a second floor and attic added to existing first floor. They've said that they're gonna keep it under thirty-five feet. It would not be contrary to the public interest, because it would be consistent with other buildings in the condominium neighborhood. Um, spirit of, the ordinance have observed that, uh, it's not increasing, um, or crowding on any other structures already on the, uh, property. Would not alter, substantial justice is done because it would not alter the character of the neighborhood. Two or six already have similar second floors. Once again, it's in line with the development that's done there. If the variance were granted, the values of the surrounding properties would not be diminished. It's an improvement and probably an upgrade to a building, which I don't have my information yet, that was probably built some time ago. Once again, the, uh, it's not harming anybody or general public. We're working on the same footprint that already exists, and it's reasonable in that it allows these people to have greater access or utilization of the property that they've bought here in our community.
Okay. We have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Discussion of the motion. I'd also like to add the condition that, uh, if state permits are needed, that they, uh, be acquired, and that allows them to do this, okay? Alright.
Very good.
And with all, with that being said, all those in favor of the motion? Enjoy.
Thank you. If one question, does the planning department, uh, find out if the state has to get involved?
Yep, we'll, we'll check into that, yep. First thing in the morning, we'll check into that.
Thank you very much, have a good evening.
Alright.
Okay. Next application is two zero two two dash zero zero two two, it's a variance three seven seven Union Ave. Variance request from D.C. to allow one unit to change from commercial to residential for a total of eleven residential units. Is the applicant here? Please come forward, introduce yourself for the record. That the record indicate the applicant is not here, therefore I make a motion, we move this to the next meeting?
Second.
We have a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so that's moved to the next meeting. Is there any other business before the board tonight? Everybody's just happy? The weather's warm, the snow is gone?
Yeah, as of last week.
Move me adjourn. Second. All those in favor, aye, good night. Let me know when that's off.